We'll call the Wednesday, March twenty seventh Troy Planning Commission meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Here.
Mrs. Erlich.
Here.
Mr. Titterington.
Here.
Mayor Oda.
Here.
Mr. Emrick. Mr. Wookiee. There's a quorum.
Okay, first item is minutes. Anything you want, is there any deletions, any deletions, corrections, or additions? Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion of second, call in favor.
Aye.
Aye, minutes are accepted. Okay, first item of business is the dedication of right-of-way associated with a replat in lot one-one-three-six-five on McKeg Road. The staff have a report.
Yes, sir, so this was annexed in two thousand and twenty, and we're really just clearing up, or cleaning up the lot lines to get additional right-of-way. The right-of-way acres will be point one-two-four acres of in lot eleven-three-six-five, and the total replat will be two acres. The roadway and drainage easements were recorded by deed in two thousand and eight, and the parcels were annexed in two thousand and twenty. The replat has been reviewed by the city engineer, and staff is requesting that Planning Commission make a positive recommendation to City Council to dedicate the point one-two-four acres of in lot eleven-three-six-five as a right-of-way. That'll conclude my report.
Okay, so we may have to, we have to make a positive or negative recommendation to Council. Is there any discussion among the committee, or among the commission?
I will move to approve.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
Okay.
A second.
I have a motion of second to recommend approval. Roll call.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Next item is the final plat approval for Fox Harbor, section ten, in dedication of right-of-way along the west side of Kings Chapel neighborhood and West Main Street. We have a report.
So this encompass is, the compass is eleven-point-four-five-five acres with twenty-seven buildable lots. The development will dedicate one-point-three-five acres of public right-of-way. This is really a continuation of the street names of Darla Drive, Executive Drive, and Leatt Drive. The zoning is R four, which will include a minimum lot area of nine thousand square feet, and park fees will be paid in lieu of public open space. Staff recommends that Planning Commission provide a positive recommendation to accept both the final plat and dedication of the public right-of-way, and that'll conclude my report.
Okay, and this is the final plat that's in Fox Harbor?
Final section.
Final section, right.
I believe we have a couple more sections left here.
Okay. Just the final plat approval, okay, for section ten. It's a recommendation by staff is to make a positive recommendation to City Council for approval. Discussion by the commission?
Make a motion to provide a positive recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for a positive recommendation. Roll call please.
Mrs. Erlich, yes. Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, before we move on to the comprehensive plan, uh, comprehensive plan review and update, is there any other business?
There's no other business outside of that.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and move forward with that.
Yep, just give that a moment to heat up. Uh, good afternoon, everybody, it's nice to see you all again. Matthew Rourke with American Structure Plan, for the record, as this is booting up. So, we're here today basically to just provide an update to this group about where we're at with the comprehensive plan, some of the initial findings and work that we're doing. Certainly not done drafting it yet, and we're not planning on doing a comprehensive overview of everything since it's still drafted and still under kind of advisement by our steering committee, but felt we're at a really good place where we come in and at least let this Planning Commission know exactly where we're at and what we're doing. It's on the preview screen. There we go, thank you, Austin. All right, so, just a quick overview of what we're gonna do today, just talk about current progress, go over the engagement summary, since we're done with the first round of public engagement, and talk a little bit about what we've drafted thus far, where we're going, and next steps, and as we continue on the process. As always, if anybody has any questions, or there's something they see on a slide they'd like me to elaborate more on, feel free to stop me whenever, don't have to wait to the end of the program by any means, can certainly keep this conversational as we go through this. But, so here we are, the existing conditions report was finished around Thanksgiving of last year, and sent out to the Advisory Committee for under review, got some comments on that, but essentially that is a, we talked about data the last time I was here, we did our fun facts exercise, that's the long version of that, and it has a lot more data in there, but really is kind of the foundational piece of where we're at in Troy and where we're going, and so a lot of projections are in there, we did a lot of housing demand analysis based on what we were hearing from the community, looking at how many apartments, new homes could be basically absorbed by the current market, did a lot of projections, did a lot of park analysis, everything we were hearing, what we heard, we tried to document in that and assign data to it, because when we go to the next step, which is the public engagement response and summary, which we've provided to staff, basically, we want to pair data with what we're hearing in the community, to see if, one, if there's any mismatches, maybe there's a perception that doesn't match reality, or maybe there's something going on there, or maybe it just confirms what we're hearing, and I think in Troy, a lot of what we did see in both efforts was, people know their town, they're involved in Troy, they really like it here, had a lot of great feedback, and really kind of understood the dynamics of Troy, and I think where they'd like to go as a community in the future, and that's really the part we're working on now. We did a lot of public engagement, we just have some highlights here on the slide, five advisory group meetings, it'll be total, we've kept that kind of updated, we've had three thus far, we did over fifty stakeholder representatives, that was spread out over five days, these were one-hour sessions where we met with groups of individuals such as business owners, land developers, residents, nonprofits, and got a lot of direct, you know, very specific feedback, had at least a hundred and fifty people come by our booths, we were at the Hometown Halloween event, and also the Grand Illumination, had a lot of people come by, really interested in what we're doing, and then the last one there, we had well over six hundred, almost seven hundred responses on the online survey, thanks to Austin, and working with the radio getting out there, everybody getting the word out, and I, I believe our previous goal, and I mentioned it last time we were here, was five hundred, and if we passed that, there was gonna be some things that maybe happened, we're still working out the details on that, but promises were made, so we're gonna see how that plays out in the future. Um, then, just the last bullet point to highlight on this slide are the plan sections we've already delivered to staff and the Advisory Committee thus far, which involves kind of introductory materials, vision goals, land use, and transportation elements, and we're gonna talk about those more in the next slide, so we won't dwell too much on that. Here's just a little more detail on who we talked to, the public engagement surveys, it's not on this slide, but the one thing I did wanna highlight was the response rate and finish rate, it was pretty much a hundred percent. Everybody that took the survey answered every question, which, that almost never happens when we do this, so even the write-in questions, nobody really even skipped those, we're really, really impressed, so when you see six hundred and eighty-two responses, there were six hundred and eighty-two people that even gave us a little more feedback than just the multi-bullet point choices we're asking for, which is great. So what that kind of means for the project, when we talk to the community, what we basically do is go through an effort where we turn these into themes, what we're hearing the most of, you can see on this slide some of the top assets that we derive from this process, location, quality of life, people in the community love their parks and their recreation assets, the trails, you know, all that sort of, open spaces all lumped in there, really great school system, large employment base, there's a lot of positives here that people really acknowledged and kind of confirmed for us, and if you look at the existing conditions report, there's a lot of data that talks about how much parks there are in Troy, for instance, per thousand residents, and definitely above the national averages. Themes from the public engagement, after we have all these exercises, the online surveys, we go through a process we call tagging, where we start to turn these into common themes based on what we're reading, seeing, hearing, here you see the ones that came up the most, downtown came up a lot, people are very proud of downtown, really happy to see the progress over the last twenty years since that first concert event, and just what's going on, seeing more progress, seeing the roads getting maintained, Main Street came up, I will say, there was one particular building that was talked about a lot, but overall, people actually, now that a lot of the street construction is done more linearly, did, they were really appreciative, they, we even had a few people at, I remember at the Halloween event tell us, yeah, when it was going on, it was a real pain, but now that Main Street and Market are almost done in those sections, they can see the improvement, so people are understanding, I think, once they see at the end of it, what that means.
So are these positives, or just topics?
They're just topics, we do go through an analysis where we try to tag it as positive, negative, but that, we didn't work that in there, it's more to give us an idea or a flavor of what we're hearing, by and large, though, mostly positive comments, other than maybe one building on Main Street that was brought up several times. Some of the other ones that are on there were, I don't know if negative is the right word, but definitely heard a lot about public transit, for instance, and how there may be not enough public transit options available for folks that don't have a car, that came up a lot, and that's gonna be something, we haven't written that part of the plan yet, but we're gonna talk about it, but so that'd be one I'd highlight on there that wasn't a, I would call super positive.
Matt, when you say a hundred and fifteen versus twenty-five, what, is that the raw number of responses?
So, it's basically, if we go through all the stakeholder comments and the write-in comments, they would say something like, we really love that, you know, the square has a lot of events, that fit into one of these themes.
So it's, it's number of mentions, then?
Yeah, it's basically, how many times, what topic did a certain comment relate to, I guess is the best way to say it. So, yeah, so that top one, for instance, a hundred and fifteen different times, that comment was basically about downtown and the riverfront.
Could that have been multiple comments in one response, or is it unique responses?
You know, it, it, there could have been some where you probably could classify it one way or the other, but we try to pick the one that's mostly the theme and organize it there, so there's, we try not to do too many repeats on this exercise for, to really kind of see which ones bubble up to the top. And so, essentially, you see all those on there, when we went through this whole analysis, the top themes of the plan, and these ultimately become the sections we describe in more detail, these are the ones that came up a lot, attainable housing, that spans everything from workforce housing to just having more single-family housing available that's more affordable to working-class folks, to even folks that, you know, just wanna move here, and they can't find anything available just due to so much, not enough supply to meet the demand, which we saw in the demand analysis and ECR as well. Growth management, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that, so we'll get into that. Parks and recreation, people talked about parks a lot, but that was a positive one for the most part. Thoroughfare plan, that was something in our scope, but also something we felt very important, 'cause it's continuing to maintain the roads, providing more mobility, public transportation, all sort of fits into this, we heard a lot about that through the process. Social services, that public transit was probably the biggest one, the other theme that bubbled up to here, we wanna make sure we don't ignore in the development of the plan is just how many services are available here in Troy because of being the county seat, so whether that be services, you know, for people needing housing 'cause they can't find it, you know, they're homeless, all those services are here, and people that we talked to not only acknowledged that that was here, but kind of looked at it as a really good thing, it comes with some side effects that we heard about, but by and large, the fact that those services are here are really kind of cherished by the community, because there is a desire to maybe be a little more inclusive and make sure we're reaching out to everybody in the community and trying to help, and that definitely came out of the engagement. And then, I mentioned it earlier on the other slide, downtown, 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 we heard this from everybody, the residents, business owners, developers, commuters, they all said, not only is downtown a great place to be, go to a restaurant, it's a major attractor. People that are looking to bring a business here, or maybe it's an existing business, having their executives come into the area, they come here downtown, they showcase downtown, so not only is it an asset for the community in terms of activity and social interaction, but really it's a selling point, and it's something that's really contributed, I think, to Troy's business development success, not just community success. Any questions on that, before I move on to kind of where we're at with the actual draft of the plan document? So, there's some introductory language in there, I don't really need to get into that, but one of the first things we developed and worked with staff to work through is what we call a vision statement, this is meant to be aspirational, it's meant to be sort of all-inclusive and positive in tone, but really, one of the first things we do, 'cause this sets the tone for the whole plan, this is where we think Troy wants to be twenty years, and I'm not gonna read this whole thing for the sake of everybody's ears, but very strong themes about the community continuing to be basically the center of activity for not just Troy, but kind of the Miami County region, everybody felt that it's an activity hub, it's a social hub, it's a cultural hub, we wanna acknowledge that and kind of lean into that, continuing to be proactive, people wanna raise their kids here, they want their kids to come back, they don't want them to go to college and move on to some other place, all those things we heard and are happening here, and we wanna acknowledge that, we wanna keep that going, and that last, kind of second to last line is one I feel really strongly about, 'cause when we do an effort like this, Troy has done so many great things over the last ten to twenty years, a lot of it's been working and doing well, you wanna lean into those challenges like you have been, so continue to take on the hard things, the things that really need to be done, even though they might not always be, you know, the easiest to pull off, I think that's something we heard a lot about through this, and we wanted to make sure that was acknowledged in this vision statement. In addition to that vision statement, the next thing we develop are what are called plan goals, and this plan, we developed eight of them, essentially, these are the themes we wanna run through all the plan sections that we're drafting, in terms of building on the success of downtown, encouraging continued residential development, and promoting a variety of housing types, all developed from our themes, I won't read through all these, I'll give everybody a chance to do that, but really, these are, they're meant to be high-level, they're meant to be themes that are repeatable throughout the other plan sections, so that we can reference them and make sure, it's really kind of an intellectual check for us to say, yep, this is, this is in line with what we heard from the community based on the goals that we've developed and feel represent what the community wants out of this plan.
Matt, this, will this slide deck be available so that we could put it on our website?
Yeah, a hundred percent.
We'll get you, Austin.
Yes, we'll make sure it's on the website, yes, sir.
Yep. We'll get it up there with that dance video, right?
Yep. Side by side.
Growth management, this was one of the big themes that came up, and really, when we started to dig into it, there were three themes that really kind of fit under this umbrella, so we're calling growth management sort of an overall development theme, and you see the three subsections on the slide there, land use, infrastructure, and economic development, they all have a role to play in here, so we don't usually set up plans this way, but it just felt like such a natural fit, and the reason is, and we've highlighted on the slide here, we heard so much from the community, we understand we're gonna grow, we even see the need to grow and wanna grow because there's intrinsic benefits with that in terms of growth, but we want it to be done very specifically and very measured, and everybody we talked to was very clear about that, and that's why you see the thirty-three percent and the forty-four percent here on the screen, I want Troy to grow a little, but not by much, or I want it to grow modestly, and when you really dig into the response data, it was all about a couple of things, being responsible with growth, but I think at the core of it, just not losing the small-town feel, the sense of pride that Troy has, and really, the sense of kind of understanding, you come downtown, or you're in your neighborhood, you know everybody, and this is your home, and it just feels familiar to you, the community really wanted to make sure that that's preserved, even as the community continues to kind of grow out from its current boundaries, so in that sense, we really thought it made sense to kind of put all these together and make sure that those themes are very much represented. The only other bullet point on here that I'd like to highlight is where it says, everything is accessible and convenient, it's part of that theme, but it also ties into the interstate access, being able to quickly get in and out of Troy proper to the surrounding areas in between parts of the community, but there's probably some things that we wanna embellish on, and I'll talk about those in a few slides as well.
Matt, before you get off of the slide, though, you talked about deliberate growth, I think is what you're, we were talking about.
Essentially, yes, a hundred percent.
From the comments and the feedback, did you get the sense that we're doing that, and they want us to keep on that pace, or that we're doing it too fast, and need to slow down, or too slow, you know, what was the tone?
You know, that's a great question, and I can't think of any comments that we sifted through that specifically said, we don't think the city's doing this, but I can't think of any that said the inverse either, it was really, just don't grow too fast, too quickly, and lose that sense of community, if I had to summarize it. I can't say, as I can point to anybody that specifically said, we think it's the right amount of growth currently per year or not, I would say, intrinsically, just having done this for as long as I have, if people thought we were growing too fast, they would've said so, and we didn't hear that, so I would say, I think most people are at least comfortable with the current pace of growth. This is just to highlight how we developed the plan sections and the information we referenced in there, this is for the growth management and land use section, but what we learned is a reference to our existing conditions report, you know, we developed all that data, we wanna show how that fits into these different sections, in this case, we highlighted the growth, the annexations, the acreages that were being done, and also, knowing we're gonna be in, starting right now, developing the zoning ordinance update, just referenced all the base districts that we discovered in the overlay districts, that'll be part of it, we wanna make sure we don't lose track of all that data we did, because it is very intrinsic to what we do, what we heard is a summary of relevant bullet points just for each section, so what we heard through all those public engagement efforts we'll highlight in each plan section again, say, as far as it relates to land use, the sense of togetherness, community character, all those important highlights, and then just an example of a graphic from one of the online slides that's in the plan draft as well, where we really wanna make sure people understand we're not just making this up ourselves, it's based on everything we researched and what we heard from the community that really leads into the goals and the strategies that we're putting in this plan, so we always like to summarize that again, just to make sure everybody has a really good reference point, especially if maybe they're just reading the plan and hadn't had a chance to read the existing conditions report yet, things like that. So, one of the first deliverables we always like to produce, and is always very kind of, it's kind of just one of the basic parts of a comprehensive plan, is a future land use map, what this map on the page shows is not only what's here in the current corporate limits, but also the expected growth areas organized by what we call character classes, and that's what all those colors on the map represent, most of these are fairly, I think, intuitive, single-unit detached, for instance, is what most people call single-family, we don't call it that anymore, just because there's been a ton of court cases on using the word family and how you should or shouldn't define that, so we just stopped doing it, we just find it's easier to go from this way to the zoning code and not have to worry about any of those things, cross-populating. A few I did wanna highlight, you'll notice there's two categories of mixed use, and that was done intentionally, downtown mixed use is the core downtown area, we heard over and over and over again, I think we understand infill might happen, and we wanna see more activity in downtown, but don't want the development to outpace or really change the scale of downtown, so we're talking height, density, those types of things, so we, we're gonna write a character class in the zoning code that represents all those, preserves the architecture, has design standards, all those things, the other mixed-use category is out towards I-75, it's very hard to see here, but basically, there's a, an older strip center here, that we've identified as a really good opportunity for like a mixed-use, more regional development, should that ever go that way, we're not saying it's gonna happen anytime soon, we wanted to provide that on a map, and that's based a lot on just what we're seeing overall out there in the retail community, I talk a lot about, when I do retail gap analysis, about how that retail world's changing, I mean, these single-use buildings on bigger lots with big parking lots seem to be falling out of favor, and so we thought this would be a really good opportunity, should an opportunity like that arise in the community, that'd be a great place for it to be, so there is a slight difference between those two districts, even though they sound really similar. The other one I wanted to highlight is called office residential, we looked at a lot of areas on the main streets of town, and essentially, they're in transition from pure residential to commercial, and it seemed to make sense to have a district that allowed for that, but also kept the scale down, so basically, you'd have businesses that look like homes, behave like homes for the most part, except there's a business in there, like a small office, a beauty parlor, possibly even maybe like a coffee tea room, we used to call it, which is a limited-service menu restaurant, 'cause we did hear parts of the community would like to have more of those, we also heard a lot about a grocery gap in certain areas, so creating a district that preserves the scale and that character we've heard so much about, but provides more opportunities to have those businesses take root in certain neighborhoods, and for the most part, they were either on Main Street or Market Street, really, where you see kind of a pure transition from either downtown into what used to be single-family residential, and it's sort of changing, and, you know, between here and I-75, there's a lot of that already sort of happening, we wanted to provide a district which basically just allowed that to happen by right, to make sure it could, it's very similar to a current district in the zoning ordinance, but we're probably gonna elaborate on some of those requirements more, but that one's might, is one that might be a little bit, is it office or residential, the idea is it's kind of both, it allows both types of uses, but makes it look like it's still a residential building, is the main idea there. The only other thing to highlight on this slide is utilities, the way we do these in zoning ordinances, we don't create a separate utilities district, the reason we do that is they're often on properties that are zoned something else anyway, like an industrial property could have a water tower, oftentimes parks have, you know, public utilities and things on them, like water towers, or sewage treatment plants even, sometimes are on park facilities, so we just make sure that that's included in the zoning ordinance as a permitted use where it makes sense, but we don't, we don't, it kind of gets murky when you have a separate zoning district for that, and then you're allowing other things, so that's why we prefer to do it that way, but that's one of those things I like to highlight, just in case there's any thoughts or comments on that. When you go through the plan, what you'll see, each character class district is given visual references through pictures, area photos, this one happens to be for open space and conservation areas, we'll always have a chart that lays out what we think are the right permitted uses to end up in the zoning code, and then on the right, you'll see this kind of number here, this is something new, we've developed specifically for this plan called the close-knit factor, and it goes back to how much we heard about preserving that, the community feeling, and so we're trying to come up with a way to preserve that as growth happens, essentially, each character class will be given its own score, and score's not the right word, call it a weight, which, regional, commercial, large-lot developments, you know, big box stores, I don't, you know, intrinsically, if they're just out there, they might not contribute to the close-knit factor of Troy, so if we give that a score of a two, for instance, we've outlined in each section, and that's what this little description shows if it was larger, basically, we understand that this may or may not contribute to the close-knit factor, here's some extra steps that we think you should take in order to make sure that you're fitting in the community, in that regional commercial example, for instance, we're recommending, like, it can't just be parking lots, there should be some sort of gathering space in there, like a public or common outdoor eating area where people can sit down and have lunch if they buy at one of the local businesses, or even an amphitheater or meeting space, and the idea here is to really give staff and the Planning Commission and the city, we know that the community's gonna grow out, this is kind of a check on that, to say, all right, if it happens, here's some extra things we want you to do to make sure you're still providing a part of the community that is valued and contributes to us feeling like we're not too far away from each other, and so, this one's, it's a little conceptual, admittedly, and we're still working through some of the details that'll end up in the zoning ordinance, but wanted to, I just really wanted to highlight that for this group to make sure they, if they had any questions on it, 'cause it is something that's sort of in process at the moment, but we feel really strongly about, because we heard just so much about how we want growth to be managed, and really not detract from what we have here in Troy now, and this is a way to help staff put a sign of value to that, essentially. Each section has objectives and strategies, the objectives on this slide are the bullet points, and underneath those, you'll see the strategies, for instance, the first one is, the industrial area is near downtown, there's more words in the plan, but essentially, those are sort of gravitating towards mixed use, let's encourage that, we've come up ways to do that, and then, for each thing we do, there'll be a strategy like this, ultimately, the top ten or fifteen of these will become the near-term goals for the next five years, so it's really important we get these right now, because there's a chance it might make it to that final fifteen, I'm talking in basketball language, 'cause it's March, I'm sorry, these are the sweet sixteen of strategies, I guess. So each plan, once you get the full draft, will have these in there, don't need to go through all of them, a lot of it's just making sure it's consistent with the zoning ordinance in the land use chapter. Transportation and infrastructure is the other part we've been working through and delivered a draft of, what we heard from the community is great assets, we're happy that the improvements are happening, the pavement condition, something we... are happening, the pavement condition, something we, we put in the existing conditions report just to know if there's any problem spots. We, we took all what we learned again, what we heard again, and tried to turn that into usable objectives. We do another step as our firm, since we work with a lot of engineers in our, in our offices. We kind of looked at a five-year growth pattern and said, all right, if these things build out the way that future land use map is projecting, what could that possibly mean to the, the city's major infrastructure systems? In this case, roads, wastewater, and water treatment. And basically, looked at square footages, number of units that are, were being proposed or created, kind of walked through that exercise, and then used that to basically see, all right, how's that going to impact the roads in this case, as part of the thoroughfare plan? And then what you see, there's a purple road kind of running north and south off McCag and some orange roads, those are the ones our, our traffic engineers have identified as, if growth continues to happen, following this pattern that we, we believe is what the community wants, these roads will probably need to be addressed with improvements at some point, whether that be more bike trails, connections, widening, that has to get worked through as the developments come in and get analyzed in more detail, but definitely the ones where we feel there'll be some pressure based on increased traffic. So, part of this process is making sure we walk through that and recommend where those improvements could happen. Just last week, we had our third advisory group meeting. Something that's come up a lot is, and we, we highlighted it the last time, oh, we have thirty-six miles of complete streets. Well, it turned out we hadn't planned, but they weren't in yet. We really wanted to come up for the city with a set of priorities, to say, all right, where does the community really think the most important complete streets, if they were to start now and pick five roads, basically, where should they be? And those are, we, we went through a, a pretty long exercise last week to really narrow in on those, and you see them here on these blue lines. So, really, based on community feedback and the advisory group's input, we've kind of turned all thirty-six miles into a little bit more manageable stretches of roads. And these were picked for a variety of reasons. One, there might be growth coming, they might connect parts of the community to help contribute to that connection. In, in the case of this road here, it connects a lot of community facilities together, the high school, you know, the, the arena, various parks, those things. And you also have some partial complete streets and bridges and trails done here, so it helps connect that, too. And so, there was a, a few criteria used to develop that, and then really dug into that last week and came up with this result. But want to make sure there's no other comments as, as we go through this, be, make sure we're not missing anything. Similar to the land use, this, this transportation and infrastructure section has its own objectives and strategies as well. A lot of this is going to, it's going to change a little bit based on last week's meeting, we're, now that we've identified where we think the priority complete streets are, some, some other items. Staff is still working through our recommendations for the water sewer capacities, pump stations, all those things, to make sure we're identifying the right ones. But essentially, what we'll end up in here is where we think infrastructure improvements are needed, as the, the community continues to build out the pattern we've identified. With that, I'll, I'll leave it up to questions. That's, those are the three sections of the plan we've delivered thus far. The next couple of months, we'll be working on the other four, and then we'll be back with the advisory group to go through another analysis and start picking out which critical path strategies we think are the main ones to focus on. We're also going to be doing more engagement events. Austin and I sat down right before this meeting to start thinking about, do we come to one or two days at the Strawberry Festival, which we're thinking maybe the Friday night, we've been told is a little more local-facing, so that'd probably be a good one to be at, and then having an open house sometime later in the summer, so the community can come and see the whole plan draft, once this develops. And so, I'll stop talking there.
In your background work, did you make any contact with some of the, like, DPNL and CenterPoint Energy, see what their support and what their plans for growth are?
Yes, we did have a utility stakeholder group, so basically, one hour conversation with all utility providers.
Okay, represented that.
Center Point, Center Point was, was represented that. And, yeah, basically, we, we, from what we understand, there's, there's plenty of power and gas in the area from both, both groups that provide those. And so, yeah, in fact, there's a really big gas line that runs just on the west side of town. So, yeah, so, we, but we did, we have not gone back to them and said, hey, does our future land use map make sense yet? But based on everything we heard, we didn't, we didn't hear anything that would be an alarm bell, so to speak.
And I'm going to say this out of curiosity, not out of, this is our ability on my part, or I'm kind of neutral on this, but did the issue of free house gases and charging stations and those sort of things, did that ever come up much in your surveys?
Not, not a lot, not a lot.
It, it didn't come up in any of the raw data?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, the only thing I could think of is the public trans, transit issue would be the closest thing to that, but it wasn't based on electric.
Yeah, that's a lack of vehicle.
Yeah, that, that was just, you know, more options for folks. That, that hadn't, that really didn't come up, even in the folks we talked to one-on-one at, at the various events.
Any other questions or comments for the consultants?
As always, this isn't the only chance, you know, feel free to email me or via Austin if you have any other questions, or you go back through the slide deck once it's out there and say, oh, yeah, what, what's this all about? Happy to answer those at any time.
If you have a question about the wastewater treatment plant, we're going for a fifteen-million-dollar expansion right now. It looks like you're suggesting another wastewater treatment plant?
Well, what it is, is if things were to build out exactly like we think in the next five to ten years, you're probably getting close to that extra two million in capacity. And so, you might need, you know, if you're thinking about it now, you might want to start planning for that, too, but, you know, that, that's a ten-year build-out. And so, it, it, it did come into our analysis, and there's more detail in that, detail in that in the plan itself. In fact, we, we sent a technical memo for staff to review, too, with all of our findings, that they're, that's the one they're reviewing. But, yeah, do we, we think that's enough or not? It's basically what we've highlighted. It's, it's, it's close, based on this. But, I mean, just last week, when we were talking to staff about it, that a lot of variables can go into that, too, like, the example we thought of is, what if a plastic mold injection company goes into that new light industrial area? They don't use a lot of water, or wastewater, but they, could it be a massive facility? So, there, there's a little bit of, you know, some of this is assumption-based, and we, we don't know all the variables until the development comes. So, it's really more of a, we wanted to raise it as sort of a caution, hey, you know, this could be an issue.
Keep it on your mind.
Yeah, we're, we're thinking about the next twenty years, it's something at least keep in mind. So, you, you know, essentially, part of this effort is we want to make sure you don't get caught by surprise by anything. You kind of talked about all this, we're, we're working on the future schedule for the next engagement events and our next meetings, but we're thinking June and July for, for the next public-facing ones. And then, the thing that's on this slide I didn't mention earlier is we're going to, right now, we're basically starting to draft the sections of the zoning ordinance. Now, we have a pretty good idea and agreement from the advisory group what those character districts will look like, since that's usually one of the first things we dig into is the new zoning districts. And we're going to start reviewing and building those and giving those to staff now, as, as we're developing the rest of the plan, and then that process, we're, we're thinking the comprehensive plan will wrap up around August, September, and then the zoning ordinance will continue in early next year, which was always kind of that eighteen-month timeline we talked about, but I feel like we're, we're right, really right on schedule to hit those deadlines, so we're making progress on both fronts. In fact, we've already started working on the zoning ordinance, we just haven't had any deliverables sent in yet. That's what I got.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions?
I have a question, it's a snob sticker from Matt. When, when you ask the community about social services, behind transportation comes childcare. Where do we zone childcare? Are we, are we set up so the childcare facility could be?
Yeah, so they're, they're allowed as a, in several districts, OC, OR, and as a home occupation currently in all of our residential districts.
Thank you.
So, I would anticipate those.
As well as the classic business districts.
Yes, sir.